Please rise for our pledge and remain standing if you choose for our invocation.
And tonight we have Pastor Dee Pavia from Christ Church in Fountain Hills to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you so much Mayor Fidel and Vice Mayor, Town Council members and staff as well. Thank you so much on behalf of Christ Church of Fountain Hills. We just want to say thank you. We love being a part of this wonderful community. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have blessed us with in this beautiful town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, that we all call home. While we all come from different backgrounds and beliefs, it is our prayer, Lord, for a community that is kind, respectful, and caring towards one another regardless. We ask, Lord, that you go before this meeting today and guide this town council with great wisdom and integrity in decision-making for the betterment of your people. And we thank you in advance for all that you have yet for all that is yet to come. Be with us, Lord, today and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Town Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Fidel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Larry B.
Present.
Councilmember Earl.
Present.
Councilmember Cali Viannakis.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Present.
Councilmember McMahon is absent. Councilmember Skellicorn.
Present.
Thank you. Now we'll have reports by Mayor, councilmembers, and Town Manager. Rachel?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everybody out there. I just wanted to give a quick update. It's hard to believe that we're coming to the end of May, which means it's the end of the school year and the kickoff to summer. A couple of reminders is that we have our graduation ceremonies down at Fountain Park on Friday evening, so there will be some fireworks and celebrations going on. We also had our summer kickoff last weekend. If you were there, it was a wonderful first-time event, something new for us. We had more than 700 people out at the park welcoming in our warm weather. Other things coming up this summer include our summer games, our Wecky Wet Wednesdays, and video game tournament. There's no shortage of things to do, so please check out our website for all the activities going on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Earl?
Yes. One fun thing that I did in the last two weeks was attended the Chamber Gala, where they recognized outstanding businesses and volunteer groups. Anyone was together? There we go. In our town. Thanks.
Councilwoman Cali Viannakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody. Greetings. Thank you for coming tonight. Very well attended again if you're at home. And you can't see this. YouTube, live streaming, of course, on Cox Channel 11. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Also, the gala was a wonderful event. I didn't have that on my list tonight. But what I did want to talk about is we just celebrated National Dog Rescue Day. That was on May 20. Every May 20, we bring awareness to the amazing dogs that live in shelters and eagerly anticipate their new forever homes. So if you do need to adopt, if you do want a pet, don't forget the dogs and the cats, even though it's Dog Day, that are in our shelters. If you want to know what it feels like to be a hero, adopt a pet, and you'll be a hero for life. We had a very special ribbon cutting this week at Mindac Gold and Silver. They've been in our town since 2012. They changed locations on the Avenue of the Fountains now. It was a great event. The mayor was there, of course, and I wanted to congratulate Mindac and Bunny and all the staff for their latest acquisition of going on the avenue. It's a great thing. As part of our business and retention program, which is by the Chamber of Commerce and Amanda Jacobs, our development manager, we went to a couple of businesses, Fountain Hills Aesthetics and Fountain Hills Design Center. We worked with them to understand the town codes, to help them, encourage them to expand their business, hire more employees, and see what we can do with the Chamber and the town to make them successful. So that was a wonderful thing. Both businesses are located on the Avenue of the Fountains. I also toured the court system here in Fountain Hills, met Judge Melton, our prosecutor, the staff. This council had recently approved some upgrades to their security, so I was able to look at the upgrades to the security. They're very appreciative of those upgrades. We're more state-level now. We didn't really have any security before, and it's time we did. So they're appreciative of our efforts here in the council. Lastly, it's Memorial Day coming up, and I know there's going to be two celebrations in town, one at nine o'clock in the morning at the Veterans Memorial, and then in the afternoon, I'm going to be down at the Memorial Park with the Desert Valley Winds, the Fountain Hills Community Band, and other members and musicians. And we're going to have a special tribute at 2:45 of remembrance why we remember a few patriotic songs. And then, of course, taps at three o'clock. So I'd invite everybody in town to attend both of those celebrations honoring Memorial Day. Thank you very much.
Councilman Watts?
Nothing too exciting, Mayor, other than this is the first couple of weeks that I've gotten numerous emails from the town residents, and it has taken up quite a bit of time. But I appreciate the questions, and hopefully I'll get you all answers. So thank you.
Councilman Skellicorn?
Thank you very much. We're really brief. Just want to shout out to the sheriff and our mounted unit that's here tonight. Thank you for protecting your town, and thank you for visiting us tonight.
Well, actually, speaking of adopting pets, I did make a visit to the kitty rescue last week and brought home a kitty. I cannot recommend that group of people enough. They have such big hearts and do so much for those animals. So if you find it in your heart or you find the time, please give the kitty rescue some love. They've been here a long time, and they're really lovely people.
Thank you. So May 11 through the 17, we just completed National Police Week, where we honor and remember law enforcement officers who died in the line of duty. In 2024, 345 officers were killed in the line of duty. So we honor and respect those officers. I attended the summer kickoff this past weekend up at Four Peaks Park, and there were literally thousands of people there. So it was really well done, Rachel. Kudos to the town staff. They put on a great show up there. I also attended the Mayor's Youth Council graduation dinner. I see they're in the audience tonight, and we'll hear a little bit more from them a little bit later on. So well done on that as well. And as Councilwoman Cali Viannakis mentioned, we attended the Mindac ribbon cutting. And they're good people in this town, and their great new location should serve them well. I also attended the Inspiration Academy. They had an open house with their Hawaiian Hulu. So that was interesting, because I had never been there before, and it was quite a gathering. And those youth put on quite a show there. So that was very, very well, very nice. And as was mentioned, I attended the Chamber Gala, where I gave out the Mayor's Award this year, and that Mayor's Award went to the International Dark Sky Discovery Center for all their hard work. It's been over a decade of their time putting that together. So and we also presented the Tourism Award as well at that gala. I attended a meeting with the men's discussion group in town here. That went very well. It was about an hour and a half. There were a lot of questions answered, asked and answered, and good lively discussion. Couple of other little announcements. The next Coffee with the Mayor will be June 17 at a new restaurant in town, Bliss, and that'll be at nine o'clock. Everybody's welcome. We have good conversation, good questions, and good exchange. So if you're around on the 17th, stop by. And also, Memorial Day, we will be out putting up flags all around the fountain, several thousand flags. I believe the Rotary is involved with. We'll be doing that at 6:00 a.m. And then, as Councilwoman Cali Viannakis mentioned, there'll be a ceremony at nine o'clock at the War Memorial as well. So and that's all I have right now. Thank you. So we'll move on now to the Mayor's Business Spotlight. And so tonight, we're going to recognize a business that's been in the town since 2018, Guardian Training and Consulting. It's a veteran-owned and law enforcement-led safety training company based in Fountain Hills, Arizona, founded in 2018, as I mentioned, by Josh and Karen Logan. The organization brings over 40 years of combined military, federal, and law enforcement experience to its mission of empowering individuals and families through practical firearms, personal safety, and emergency medical training. And Rick was just talking about one of the sessions that they hold on a monthly basis, Stop the Bleed. So that's really important stuff to know. And so if you see that, you can sign up for those courses. As a certified USCCA training partner, Guardian offers a wide range of programs, including concealed carry and home defense, AR-15 fundamentals, and emergency first aid. Their services extend to home security consultations and real-world use of force scenarios with training tailored to civilians, security professionals, and law enforcement. Beyond the classroom, Guardian is deeply rooted in our community service. Their nonprofit initiative, Guardian First Responders, they actively support law enforcement and emergency personnel. One of their signature community efforts includes raising funds each year for the Fountain Hills First Responder Christmas tree. And I've been a big supporter of that for many years. So we really appreciate the fact that you guys spearhead that and take that up for the community. It's great to have that blue tree down on the avenue. Guardian's motto is, "What are you doing today to prepare for tomorrow?" It reflects their dedication not only to just training, but to building a safer, stronger community. And they're located now on the Avenue of the Fountains, 16704 East Avenue of the Fountains, Suite 105. So I'm going to ask you to come up. I'm going to present you this plaque, and then you could say a few things about your business, please.
So Karen, let me speak first. Real boss. So I just want to say thank you, guys. It's been a great journey. I retired from a local police department in 2020. We started this company in 2018, and now retiring from law enforcement, wife retiring from law enforcement. We love what we do. We love this town. It's funny, because I worked in the valley my entire police career. And when Karen retired from law enforcement, I said, "Where do you live at?" And she goes, "Fountain Hills." I'm like, "That's where all the old people are at." But the minute I came up here as a local B-Cop down in the valley, I loved it. The black dark sky community, I worked graves and swings my entire career. So the minute I'd pull up 87, past the about one o'clock in the morning, past 87, and the red mountain, my blood pressure dropped like 30 points, because I'd see the valley, the glow of the valley behind me and all the crap that's associated with it, sorry. And then I'd see in front of me the dark skies of Fountain Hills, and I love this town. So yeah, we're a full-service training organization. Another thing that we do just added is expert witness testimony. So I do, right now, I'm working a couple murder cases right now involving self-defense. So yeah, please, if anything, get ahold of us. So I'll let the boss lady talk.
All right, I'll be quick. Thank you, Mayor Fidel, for honoring us for the spotlight this month. We do provide training, civilian training, for those that are looking for just general safety and awareness, all the way through to firearm training. So we're available. We love this town. We're here. We're not leaving. We're not going anywhere. I'm not retiring anywhere else. There's nowhere else you're going to go after this, right? So please reach out to us. We're on the avenue. You can reach us at guardiantrainingandconsulting.com. Yep, and that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So the next recognition that we have is our Veteran of the Quarter. And tonight, we're going to be honoring Captain Bruce Kosovich. Let me tell you a little bit about Bruce. Captain Bruce Kosovich was commissioned as an ensign in 1972 from the Officer Candidate School in Newport, Rhode Island. He attended the Navy Supply Corp School in Athens, Georgia, and was stationed onboard the guided missile destroyer USS Buchanan as a supply officer. Throughout his naval career, Captain Kosovich was the commanding officer of four units that integrated with the Fleet Logistics Center in San Diego, the Navy Petroleum Office, Fort Belivar, Virginia, and the Naval Reserve Readiness Command, Region 19 in San Diego. He was an executive officer of three units that functioned with the Defense Contract Management Command of the Defense Logistics Agency, and served with the Joint Commands within the U.S. Air Force and the Army and Marine Corps. He served major roles in various exercises, including two rim packs in Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, Operation Brimfrost in Fairbanks, Alaska, and two keen edge exercises in Yokosaka, Japan. Further training included coursework with the Naval War College in Newport, Rhode Island, and Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, California. In October 1999, Captain Kosovich retired from the U.S. Navy in San Diego with 28 years of experience. Along the way, Bruce was also employed by two pharmaceutical companies and finally retired again after working 20 years with GE Capital. He came out of retirement in 2016 as the philanthropy manager at Lowell Observatory and flagstaff until 2025. He has led two HOAs and is president of the Arizona Chapter of Military Officers Association of America, and is the president of the Mountain View Presbyterian Church Foundation, and serves as a philanthropy manager on the board of our very own International Dark Sky Discovery Center here in Fountain Hills, Arizona. So would you please help me welcome our Veteran of the Quarter? And Bruce, come on up and get this plaque and say a few words, if you would.
And like you and I were talking about earlier, this should have been done years ago, I think, for a number of veterans. So I feel honored to be in that number. But thank you so much for this recognition. It's great. And thank you all, to you too. I really appreciate it. We love Fountain Hills as well. Moved here in 2019, my wife and I, Sherri, in the audience. And we're not going anywhere either. In fact, this is my last move, folks. So I'm not going anywhere. I love it here. Don't forget the International Dark Sky Discovery Center. It's coming along. If you've seen it on the, as you drive by, it's being covered and so on. And so it's really coming along great. In fact, probably in the fall, we're going to be opening up about a third of it. You'll have the observatory, and you'll have a viewing terrace and so on. So that'll be great. And then later on, we'll have the other two-thirds of the whole Discovery Center. So it's something that Fountain Hills can be very much proud of. So again, thank you for this recognition. Appreciate it.
And on a night of recognition, we've got one more recognition. This one is really special, because Deputy Volz, who's been with the town for seven years, is going to be recognized tonight, and we have a nice plaque for him, too. So let me read a couple things about Deputy Volz. His service to the citizens of Maricopa County started in 1996, serving as a posse member before becoming a reserve deputy with the Sheriff's Office. His passion for professionalism led him to becoming a full-time deputy sheriff in 2004. During his career, Deputy Volz used his talents and interests to serve many specialized areas of law enforcement profession. He earned the position of detective for his specialized enforcement operations, worked with the Superior Court to support its operations, and covered assignments in multiple districts in Maricopa County. Deputy Volz displayed his commitment to serving the community and his coworkers in his profession by taking assignments dedicated to positive outcomes, both externally and internally, for personnel in the profession. These assignments include hostage negotiator position and the crisis intervention team for the Sheriff's Office. Deputy Volz's career included many instances of recognition and awards for his performance, with 17 commendations and a nomination for prestigious higher award from the organization. Although today's recognition is for Deputy Volz's 20 years of sworn service to his community, his service to that community goes back almost 30 years and is highlighted with examples of the truest dedication to people by his actions. Congratulations, Deputy. Please come forward. And I know Sheriff Jerry Sheridan is in the room, and also Captain Thomas, would you come forward, too?
our honored guests that are here tonight. You don't catch me often. I had a loss for words, but I kind of am at the moment. Well, let me close, let me begin and close with a short story that I shared with my team at my cake and ice cream going-away party last week. When I was a little kid and into my teen years, my father owned like four or five businesses. But when it came to hunting and fishing season, he always took time off, and we had time together. And it was a really, really great time. Well, whenever we went out hunting or fishing, my father would always have me pick up garbage that people had left behind. And I argued with him. I argued I didn't do it. It's not my garbage. It isn't fair. Yeah, I never won the argument. I always had to pick it up. Well, my dad died when I was 23 years old. And a couple of years after that, I was thinking about that instance, and I think I had an epiphany that I was trying to learn, or he was trying to teach me a bigger lesson. And that lesson that I took from that, those garbage picking up days, was no matter where you are, or what you do, or where you go, try to leave it a little bit better than you found it. So my goal with the Sheriff's Department when it came on was to leave it a little bit better than I found it. So I've tried to make as many contributions as I could. When I was assigned to Fountain Hills, my goal was to make Fountain Hills and the members and the citizens I ran into just a little bit better after I had had contact with them. So thank you for this award, and thank you for letting me have an impact on your city. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Can the other deputies, can the other deputies come forward so you can get a picture with your guy here? so you can get a picture with your guy here? And we'll move on to the proclamation tonight. So we have a National Public Works Week proclamation, which Councilman Rick Watts is going to read for us.
So if Mr. Welty would stand up. On behalf of the Public Works Department, as part of the May 18th through 24th, 25th National Public Works Week proclamation, whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Fountain Hills, and whereas these infrastructure facilities, services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Fountain Hills to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, I, Mayor Jerry Friddell, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life. It witness herof, and under my hand, I cause this fix to seal the town of Fountain Hills, Maricopa County.
All right, we'll move on now to presentations. Mayor's Youth Council, Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You mentioned earlier we have our Mayor's Youth Council here tonight. They celebrated the end of their season. We have Skylar here to introduce us and give us a recap of what they accomplished this year.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me this evening. My name is Skylar Thomas. I am one of the NYC advisors. In addition, I would like to also recognize Sarah Lynn, Recreation Coordinator, and Caitlin Kraszewski, Recreation Assistant. They are also NYC advisors. And I'd also like to recognize two of our NYC members here. We have our NYC Chair, Milo Andre, who's right there. And then we also have Daniel Williams, Vice Chair, as well. And he is also right here. So just a quick overview. I have a video for you tonight. That's a recap of what NYC has done for the year 2024, 2025. And so we have eight NYC members, and they have completed over 200 community services hours this year, ranging from Make a Difference Day, community events, and Food for Kids as well. And so I would like to play this video for you that NYC has helped create. And then we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have at the end.
Hi, everyone. We're the Fountain Hills Mayor's Youth Council. This year has been full of events, leadership, growth, and a lot of teamwork. We've had the chance to get involved in the community, learn from our town leaders, and make our voices heard as teens in Fountain Hills. Here's a little sneak peek behind the scenes to show you what we've been up to this past year as a team. We kicked off the year with a series of fall service events. Our first big event was Back to School Bash, where we helped welcome students back with games, activities, and school spirit. Then came Make a Difference Day, where we joined the community members in service projects to make a positive impact. Next was Spooky Blast, a Halloween-themed event where we helped run games, handed out treats, and made the night memorable for local kids. To wrap up the year of 2024, we participated in Turkey Chart Stryik Snag and celebrated it together at the NYC Holiday Party.
After the holidays, we jumped right into planning our signature event, Teen Takeover. This event, designed for teens by teens, was a blast. We had laser tag, music, snacks, a photo booth, a movie, and raffle prizes. It was a great way for local teens to connect and have fun. We also stayed focused on service by organizing an adopt-a-street cleanup, where we worked to clean the avenue of fountains and helped package meals with Food for Kids, an organization that supports families locally around the world. As spring rolled in, we took part in two of Fountain Hills' biggest events, Irish Fest and Ichabacanza. We helped with the setup, ran inflatable games, managed lines, and shared in the excitement. These experiences showed us the efforts it takes to create community events and how rewarding this is to be involved.
Being on the youth council isn't just about volunteering. It's also about leadership and learning. Throughout the year, we met with different town departments, including finance and economic development, to learn about the decision-making processes that keep the town running. We also had the chance to meet with the mayor, ask questions, and gain insight into local government. In February, we hosted the Apache Junction Youth Council for a joint meeting. We shared ideas, discussed our projects, and learned from one another. A highlight of the year was attending the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference, where we connected with other youth council members, attended workshops, and met elected officials from across the state.
One of our biggest projects this year was creating a survey to give teens a voice in our community. We wanted to know how teens feel about Fountain Hills, what events they enjoy, and how we can encourage more involvement. We put together a digital survey and shared it through schools, social media, and Word of Mouth. Over 100 local teens responded, giving us valuable insights into what they want to see in our town. We analyzed the results and came up with a report of actionable suggestions. This project was more than just collecting data. It was making sure that youth perspectives are heard.
After reviewing the survey responses, we found three key takeaways. Better access to information. Many teens said they didn't know about events happening in town. Improving communication through social media and school announcements could help. Two, a space just for teens. While a new recreation center would be great, hosting regular teen-friendly activities at the community center could also make a big difference. And three, variety in events. Teens expressed a desire for more diverse and engaging activities like pop-up events, theme nights, and outdoor movie screenings. They want events that feel fresh and geared towards their age group. We hope these insights help shape future programming for teens and towns.
As the Mayor's Youth Council wraps up another impactful year, we want to thank Mayor Friddell and the town council for their continued support. We also want to recognize our graduating member, Shroya Na, for his outstanding contributions. We wish him success in his future endeavors. Looking ahead, the NYC is committed to creating new opportunities for youth engagement and local government and expanding our community service efforts. We encourage all Fountain Hills students entering grades nine through 12 for the 2025-2026 school year to apply and be a part of this rewarding experience. To learn more, visit fountainhillsaz.gov/MYC.
Thank you. Any questions? Awesome. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Very well done. And now we'll move on to the Quarter Three Fiscal Year 2025 Revenue Update. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Paul's joining us tonight to give us a revenue update. I know you guys have heard a lot of budget, a lot of numbers, a lot of things. So we're limiting this just to, again, the third quarter, specific to the revenues coming into the town. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Rachel. It's actually required by our strategic plan as well, so I'll add that. All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, tonight I'll be providing a Quarter Three update on fiscal year 2025 revenues. Overall, we're still seeing some headwinds. In particular, February of 2025 was a contraction month with about 12% lower local sales tax revenues. That was also the first, excuse me, the first month the town no longer collected the long-term residential rental taxes. But despite February, January, and March provide some resilient revenues, and we're still 14% above our conservative projections for the year. So the town, for the third quarter, the total taxable activity was $192 million, about 2.8% lower than the previous year. However, you can kind of see what I just explained in the graph. January and March were actually pretty good, but our February revenues came in at a disappointing level, well below 2024, but a little bit higher than 2023. For our total TPT collections, we collected $5.5 million, which is still $1 million more than our conservative projections, but a decrease of 1.5% compared to the prior year. For retail sales, which is our biggest category of local sales tax, we collected $3 million, about $330,000 more than projected, an increase of close to 2% compared to the prior year, which is actually very similar, a similar trend to what the state is collecting at the state level. They're trending about 2% so far this fiscal year. So we are tracking with the state relatively closely. Just something we've been doing this year. We take out the food tax just to consider local shopping trends without food tax. Funny thing about our food tax, which I will say is a little concerning, is that it's been somewhat flat. It's actually a little bit less so far this year than last year. Typically, it goes up slightly because the cost of food has been going up, and people need to eat. So that's something to consider. Definitely seen a little bit of contraction in our local food tax revenues. But without that, we have an increase of 2.5% of our retail sales without food taxes compared to the prior year. Remote sellers, if you recall from my last Quarter Two presentation, that actually decreased in Quarter Two by about 3% from the prior year. So we saw kind of a big recovery in Quarter Three, where there was a large increase of 17% for remote sellers, local sales taxes. So we are seeing, again, the trend starting to go back up to where people are shifting their spending to online spending. Construction sales tax, this is a little skewed. I mention this every presentation. You probably heard me say it many times. We had a little bit of a construction boom in construction costs the prior two years. So while our construction sales tax revenues decreased by about 26% from last year, we're still trending quite well. We've already collected about $1.9 million through the first nine months, which is already above our full-year conservative projections. And we collected $127,000 more than projected this quarter. So yes, there was a large decrease from the prior year, but we're still trending well with construction sales tax revenues. Utilities and communications, I will say this is the one kind of red flag for this quarter. Typically, utilities are pretty consistent. They slightly go up based on the cost of utilities, slightly going up. People need utilities in their homes. But for this quarter, it actually went down by 0.6%. That could be an indication of our residents paying a little closer attention to their utilities, you know, turning the heat off sooner, things like that. So just keeping a closer eye on their utility bills. Definitely something to keep in mind. We did bring in less than projected, and the decrease, as I mentioned. Real estate, so just to keep in mind what we've been talking about through all the budget meetings, this was the year that the long-term residential rental tax went away. The state eliminated that about a year, year and a half ago. And it would start in January of 2025. So you'll see it drops in February. February is based on January tax activity. So that's the first month you see the new base. Basically, that's going to be our new baseline, where we're going to be bringing in lower revenues for real estate rental taxes. However, as you can see, it's still well more than we projected because we took that into consideration, into our projections, that it would drop. So yeah, we'll just continue to talk about that, but that is all expected, essentially. Restaurants and bars, this is a good surprise. Last quarter, in the second quarter, our restaurants and bars had a bad quarter. They went down by 17% in my last presentation, year over year. However, we had quite a bit of a recovery for Quarter Three. We collected $430,000 of restaurants and bars' local sales tax revenues, $71,000 more than projected, and an increase of almost 9% over the prior year. So great, great news. Good for our restaurants and bars, and I hope that trend continues. Services, this was actually quite good. This is really our all-star category right now. This kind of represents our leisure and tourism-type activities. People coming to the town to golf, staying at short-term rentals, staying at hotels. We had kind of a blowout quarter where we collected $765,000 for the quarter compared to $419,000 projected, an increase of almost 35% over the prior year. So it would be great to see that continue. But as you can see by the graph, it does kind of fluctuate based on the events going on. So definitely hopeful for continued increases in this category. Any questions on local sales taxes before I finish? No? Okay. Great. State shared revenues, as typical, they've been coming in pretty much as projected. State shared revenue for sales taxes, we collected $930,000 for the quarter, about $23,000 more than projected. Our state shared revenue for income taxes came in just about on par with what we projected at 1.26 million. Our HRF revenues, slightly more than projected, at $469,000 for the quarter. And we did get a little bit of an increased surprise at $346,000 for our vehicle license taxes. What I've been reading is that is kind of a macroeconomic thing across the country where, you know, people have been purchasing cars a little bit more to get ahead of some of the tariffs that have been discussed at the federal level. So we did see a little bit of a surprise there, about $40,000 more than projected. So with that, that's my Quarter Three revenue update. I'll take any questions you have.
I don't see any. Thank you, Paul. Good job. And now we'll move on to the call to the public. Town Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, we have eight cards. We'll start with Shelby Bleeker, and then followed by Cindy Couture.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers and staff. Shelby Blacker, town resident. I'm sure I'm not the only person in this room who's growing weary of the nonstop accusations leveled against the members of the town council. I love Fountain Hills. Frankly, having to sit through public comments filled with thin facts and out-of-context pictures has become truly gringeworthy. Our town, in my opinion, can do little more than acknowledge that these attempts to embarrass them are quite simply a monumental waste of our collective time. We see individuals arrive with printed posters highlighting a momentary stance by a council member. Those of us who are present and know the truth of the situation know what happened. Then we hear accusations about broken campaign promises regarding fencing around a downtown project. The promise wasn't part of the platform, but we have complainers, many of whom have likely never taken to a shovel-ready project or understand commercial real estate at all. They're just spewing ignorance. Let's not forget it was actually the prior mayor who did more to delay that project than anyone else here today. And let's talk about these ethics issues. You all get accused of saying or doing something that offended someone. And Greg Dudas so aptly recently wrote, "Concerning an end to the complaint game in Fountain Hills, our ethics policy, quote, 'wasn't a code of conduct. It was a weaponized suggestion box to uphold integrity while quietly eroding it,' unquote." Regardless of where you stand on these ethics matters, can parliamentary procedure truly be weaponized? Majority rule is the very basis for nearly all parliamentary motions. Now let's talk about facts, specifically facts that I believe have been misrepresented recently. According to data USA and the Fountain Hills website, the median income of Fountain Hills is $104,000, some $188,000, not $184,000 cited at the last meeting. Furthermore, while 50% of households here make $100,000 or more annually, over 22% earn less than $50,000. More data facts. Data USA indicates that 83.3% of homes in Fountain Hills in 2023 are owner-occupied. But what about the 6.5% of our residents who live below the poverty line? That's over 1,500 people. Who makes up this group? Primarily males aged 55 to 64, and followed by males aged 65 to 74. That data is readily available. I also want to highlight the anguish of a local school teacher struggling with the lack of affordable homes, not just apartments, in Fountain Hills. Did the prior mayor truly consider this when she supported a bond initiative that would raise property taxes, making homeownership even less affordable? Let's not forget 34% of homeowners whose income is less than $60,000, 34%. Do they deserve higher taxes in the form of property tax increases? We must view these facts, not false narratives peddled by others, and ask ourselves, how are young families and children supposed to live here? Do we want to prevent young families from owning a home in Fountain Hills? Town council members, Mr. Mayor, please keep these critical... members, Mr. Mayor, please keep these critical facts in mind when you are pressured by those who show up with stories but no facts, asking you to raise sales and property taxes. And finally, let's stop wasting precious time to call the public to embarrass our town, our mayor, and our council members. Thank you.
Mayor Friedel, council. I'm Cindy Couture, I'm a Fountain Hills resident, and I'm here for a couple of reasons. The first is, I love the new spotlight of businesses and people. I think that's a really good idea. I've learned about a lot of businesses and, and people who live in town, and it's impressive. I'm just wondering how the selection is done. Is it a mayor's choice, or is there a committee or a group or, or what? And I would like to suggest a change in the procedure if it's just one person's choice. I would love to see it broadened. For example, you might pick town groups to make a decision about people that are in their group. You might have something like mobile meals, pick their longest-serving volunteer. The VFW might pick a person to, a service person to honor. You could have the People in Dark Sky or Golden Eagle Foundation choose their, their best volunteer too. And the businesses could be chosen by our town's Chamber of Commerce. You could even have various churches sponsor their most active volunteers. So, it's just a suggestion. I think it would make the spotlight a little bit more meaningful because it would be awarded by a group of, of peers. So, you know, just my, my take on it. Thank you.
I, I will respond to that for you. The mayor makes no decision on any of those awards. Those are all done by committee. We have the VFW, the American Legion Post, and the Marine Corps League that weigh in on the veteran of the quarter. And then our Economic Development Department deals, picks the business spotlight. So, the mayor has no input. Thank you, though.
Steve Baggio, followed by Susan DiGennaro.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, people at home, people here. I'm here just to talk about the summer and a couple of things coming up. I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if we do it, but Flag Day is June 14th, and I was seeing if possibly, I don't know if we do it, like I said, if we could have the fountain red, white, and blue that day, you know, to eliminate, to illuminate the fountain, beautiful country and our flag. We're so proud of this beautiful country. And this might be bursing it, but if we could have Free Bird playing every hour when the fountain goes off, you know, I, I'd really appreciate that, you know, I, so, but anyway, so that's just my suggestion. I think we do it on the Fourth of July, but you know, Free Bird, anyway. And the second one is, with fire season coming up, I was wondering about the Code Red we used to have, and it would be like a phone call that you would get if there's a fire coming up or if there's an emergency situation. And I haven't heard that much about it. And the reason I'm saying that is because a lot of people in this community are elderly, so they're not always online 24/7 to get updates. So, I was seeing if with fire season and prevention, if we could somehow look into having a system like that or implementing it so that way, you know, God forbid there's a fire or a gun close by, that our residents are prepared just in case. We do have to evacuate, God, evacuate, God forbid, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen. But that's pretty much it, you know, fire season's really, you know, I knew it could seriously, Mayor and everybody here loves. It's just something I think we should focus on, especially if we do have another drought. So, thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful summer.
Hello, sorry, first time. My name is Susan DiGennaro, and I'm a six-year resident of Fountain Hills. I have tried to contact Republi, Representative Schweikert with my concerns, but I have had no luck, so I'm bringing them to you and hopefully to everybody online. I'm here to talk about the GOP budget bill, actually. It's over 1,100 pages long and filled with devastating cuts to vital programs in exchange for tax cuts that will disproportionately help the rich. The plan is so unpopular that the Republicans are taking another vote tomorrow morning, literally tonight, tomorrow morning, 1:00 AM, and it feels like they're trying to hide it. So, I'm here to talk about it. After-tax income in this budget for people making less than 12, sorry, $17,000 a year will lose $1,000 in take-home. People making between $17,000 and $15,000 a year, which we just heard were a lot of people who live here, will lose $700 out of their take-home. People making over $400 million a year will gain $389,000 a year, according to this budget. 44% of all American children benefit from Medicaid or SNAP, SNAP, and this budget guts both of those programs. Yes, the party of American and family values is putting 34 million kids' healthcare access and food security at risk by this bill. There is a carried interest loophole that lets private equity executives play lower taxes, treating their incomes as capital gains. This bill makes devastating cuts to social programs while leaving this loophole, which President Trump promised to end, it leaves it intact. He promised to bring home, bring down the cost of housing, and this bill slashes rental assistance, ends tax breaks for predatory landlords, and restricts governments from, state governments from cracking down on rent gouging AI programs. While millions get kicked off healthcare and lose critical food assistance, this bill enables the super-rich to continue to pass down their wealth tax-free. They also plan to sell off public land and water and things that are essential to us as Arizonians to make the state as great as it is. What I'm most concerned about is that Donald Trump ran for president on the promise to protect Social Security. This budget breaks that promise. It keeps funding its Social Security flat, which is a de facto cut. That's money that residents in this town can be spending here. I urge everyone to contact President, Representative Schweikert and tell him to say no to this budget. I hope that you on the council will do the same to protect our citizens in Fountain Hills and everywhere in Arizona. Thank you.
Wendy Dashell, followed by Ed Stizza.
Hello, Mayor, council members, staff, residents. My name is Wendy Dockle. I've been a resident for 22 years, and I was raised with a strict and fair moral code, which meant that laws and rules are there for a reason, and everyone is expected to abide by them. As a Silver Falcon-awarded high school teacher in town here, one of my priorities was to include these principles to my students. Although my subject matter was very important to me, it was almost just as important to make them citizens that would contribute and be kind, et cetera. Seven months ago, I left Fountain Hills Physical Therapy and discovered that my car had been rammed into quite forcibly. Was there a note on the windshield with an apology and contact information? Of course not. I thought, what kind of a scumbag, low-life coward would do such a thing? To me, it's just horrible. I just can't imagine doing that. Well, I never found out who that person was, and I was responsible for over $2,500 of damage. Subsequently, I paid special attention to the sheriff reports in our local paper and saw that at least twice a week, there was a report of a hit and run. Well, now, we have a high-profile case, bringing negative attention to our community. I don't appreciate this. It's getting really old, but it seems to me that this is representative of our current country's disposition. Take no responsibility for your actions, think you're above the law, have no remorse for damaging others' property, and I'm very sad that this brings, again, negative attention to Fountain Hills. Although Mr. Skilicorn does not represent me, he does represent the town, and I would urge him to resign to avoid more embarrassing news that makes us look really bad. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, town council, staff, and the public, both seated here and at home watching, hopefully. So, talk about bringing negativity to the town, boy, that just typifies it right there. Sad to see that type of stuff because it just makes it worse. So, any sort of negative comments like that. So, last night, I had a, just an absolute beautiful drive into Fountain Hills, and I came back in the town, and it was close to right before dark, and I was able to drive down the Avenue of the Fountains, and what a glorious sight to see. Nice and clean, grass was nice and green, nice and open, everything looked great. I mean, it was just absolutely beautiful to see a bunch of the public walking through the town on the sidewalks. Everybody was smiling and happy. So, I just wanted to say that everybody needs to appreciate Fountain Hills, that we live here, and get out of this negativity that we are seeing constantly. And hopefully, everybody can take a, a nice look at where we live and really appreciate it. And, but thank you all for what you do. Have a good night.
Lori Troller, and the last speaker is Crystal Kavanaugh.
Good evening, Councilwoman Lori Troller. Tonight, my issue is just a clerical issue. When you go into the agenda and for the, all the meetings for the town, particularly the town council meetings, the transcriptions aren't always searchable. These things are over 100 pages. Depends upon how lovely our meeting was, right? So, I'll just do a quick rundown for you, just for the record, if you want to play it back. October 2024, that's pretty good. It starts in November, November 19th, that's actually searchable, but it's sideways, not, not, not too usable. November 20th, you can't search. December 3rd, you can't search. December 17th, you can search. That one's okay. January 4th, and then February, all of February, you can't search. And then there's, March 4th is searchable, and I couldn't tell you March 18th, but it's, it's really easy. I'll, I'll just hand you this. And then there's no transcripts for April yet, but I think that's normal. So, it's just a clerical issue. If we're trying to do any research on the transcripts through the town, I, I don't know what's with those documents, but if we can get those. Most of the other documents, if they aren't town council, are searchable. So, it's just particularly those. So, that's it. Thanks.
Well, now, the, the door has been opened. I'd like to say I think it was exceptionally inappropriate for sitting council member Calabianakis to give a quote to the Arizona Republic that not only identified her as a rival council member, but then point-blank quoted her as stating, "Allen refuses to take responsibility for Allen's actions." The fact he would flee an accident scene fits right in line with other things I've noticed about his character. This was outrageous. Character assassination, assassination before the facts are actually known. It was very unprofessional not to reserve judgment until that time. And this holds to members of the public too, who also have not been presented with facts or specific details. And speaking of newspapers, how was it appropriate for our local paper to print Councilwoman Gail Earl's name in an article last month while pairing it with an accusation that she made false claims regarding services and billing from our last attorney? The article indicated that Pierce Coleman itself terminated its services with the town on April 16th. But it was then suggested that there were personal reasons for her audit. Was there not another valid reason to review the short, two-page contract and services? Did Pierce Coleman provide any specific information to counter the billing information the councilwoman had put together? For them to dismiss it and label it false without providing anything further wasn't appropriate. Was the legal services contract ever reviewed prior to Councilwoman Earl doing so? The contract was entered into approximately six years ago. I do know that when I personally FOIA'd it, I received the very same original contract from 2019 with no updates included, and that was quite a while ago, too. And then it was re-FOIA'd. From various comments and posts, and even from certain council members, there have been some conflicting interpretations of this so-called audit, or more simply put, this contract review. Any misinformation about such an important topic is not helpful with transparency of the facts. Clearly, there was some basis that triggered this audit. Perhaps the council and newspaper should do a deeper dive into the various aspects of this situation and not draw premature conclusions about sitting Councilwoman Earl's motivations or findings. Her findings should simply be a jumping-off point that encourages further investigation, such as should be done with all town contracts. Thank you.
Mayor?
Town?
May I respond? My name is called.
Councilwoman Earl, you have something to say?
Yes, I want to make it very clear that the contract, now, we can talk publicly about it because FOIAs have been requested. And the contract that we have from 2019 does state that it would be reviewed every year. And it was not reviewed. So, as a council member, this is our job to review it. And I want to make it really clear that we, yes, we did agree to pay the $234,000 a year. So, there was no fraud, no illegal activity done. Therefore, it did not warrant a forensic audit, which would be for if there was something fraudulent. The objective of this was to determine if the flat rate was beneficial to our town versus the hourly rate. And that's what my review audit did. I went through 65 months of invoices, calculated them out, and that's where we came up with, or I did, came up with the number that compared to the flat rate versus the hourly rate, it was in excess. We paid in excess, of course, we agreed to it, so it was not wrong. But we paid in excess of $320,000 over the 65 months. Now, that wouldn't be a problem because we agreed, and we could have discussed that. But the attorney chose to, to terminate before we had a chance to discuss it because there wasn't time that night and to come back and discuss it. So, that's what the objective of it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager, it was brought up about Flag Day, June 14th. Can we see that the fountain is red, white, and blue on that day? Thank you. So, that, that will be addressed. Thank you for bringing that up. And we'll move on now to the consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Move to approve? Sorry.
Okay. We need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Yes.
Council Calabianakis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friedel?
Aye.
Mayor 6-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. And we've got consideration for approving ordinance 25-05, amending town codes, Chapter 9, Article 9 through 7 trees. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Director Snipes, I believe, is presenting this item tonight. This is a, an update of our code to institute some procedures so that we have some recourse if our trees, which are a big asset in our community, if they're damaged or otherwise mistreated. Director?
Thank you. Mayor, council, tonight, we're looking at, in adding a tree ordinance to our town code. It's something that hasn't been in there in the past, which meant that we were underprotected when we have different contractors coming in or utilities coming in and doing work around town. in and doing work around town. What this does is it, it calls out specific ways that trees are and are not allowed to be pruned, as well as if, say, a contractor were to come in and dig a trench around a tree and cut the roots around it, that eventually kills the tree, then we'll have evaluation done on the trees to where that we actually get the value of the tree versus them coming back and going, "My bad," and giving us a 15-gallon tree for a 50-year-old tree. That's not a fair trade. So, we want to make sure that we, we have this in place, and it, it's for use for all of our departments. It's not just parks, it'll be our parks, and our Public Works Department will be the administrators of this. We have it set up where it could be a town designee or an arborist that can, that can do this, do the judgments on what's going on in the field. There are penalties that follow our town code for non-compliance. It's, it's been a long time coming that, that we, we need to protect such a valuable asset as our, our shade trees. We know how long it takes for our small trees to become shade trees, and so when we get them there, we want to make sure that they're protected as a valuable asset. With that, I'll take any questions.
Vice Mayor?
Just for the good of the order, it says that we would be asking the town arborist if we wanted to plant, say, an orange tree on our property in the right-of-way. Who is our town arborist?
So, the way that the, the arborist is written in the definitions in this is that it's, it can be a town arborist or a designee, an employee designee. So, it just depends on what we have on staff at, at that time. It could be that it's a superintendent, it could be that it's a director, and it, it could also be a town arborist, or it could be a hired arborist to help us out making those decisions.
Okay. So, theoretically, if there's a resident who, after we pass this, needs to reach out to whoever, whoever we do have, are you the one we reach out to right now, or who would that be?
So, this is not for residents. This is for town-owned property only. It could be a park, it could be a right-of-way, it could be a median. So, this is guided for our town assets, not for a residence house.
I, I apologize. I understand. However, we do have our section regarding right-of-ways and the adjacent property owner being responsible for maintaining those trees should they be on their property, but in the right-of-way. In that scenario, if they are looking to plant a tree, acceptable tree species require written permission from the town. So, just, who would, who would someone reach out to if they had a question?
It would depend on what it was going into. So, if it was in a right-of-way scenario, it would come through the Public Works Department in Justin. If it was in a parks scenario, then it would come through the Community Services Division, and it would come through me.
Got it. Okay. So, for those watching at home, Justin's your arborist, kind of.
Councilman Watts?
So, Kevin, so is there a, a list of pre-approved trees?
There is.
You've got one? Is it published somewhere?
It's listed in the ordinance itself. It, it says exactly what, what we would use. Let's see here.
I don't really need to know them all. I just want to know that it's there.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we have a list of, of trees that's updated on a regular basis statewide, and that's what we'll be using.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No, okay. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve ordinance 25-05, amending Chapter 9, Article 79 regarding trees.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Skellicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Calavianakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larabee?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you.
We'll move on to 8B, which is consideration for action for Resolution 2025-07, project agreement with the Maricopa County, Maricopa Association of Governments. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin's going to be presenting tonight on a grant that I know we've talked with, talked about quite a few times, actually. It's finally come to fruition regarding sidewalk design, I believe, along Park View. Is that right? Awesome. If you can share the details with us, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. Grants are a wonderful thing when they provide a benefit. Oftentimes, they can be challenging, and we've had this discussion in this room and in the building and, and in the town. It requires a considerable amount of staff time to prepare all the documents and submit for these grant applications. In this particular case, this grant application is not as complicated and time-consuming, but it did require an application two times. The first time, as part of the scoring process, the town did not get a high enough score for the committee at MAG, and the projects moved forward that were selected. Some or all of those projects either had surplus money, or there was available money left over that was not for a project that was selected. As an end result, it's called closeout funding. We are the benefactor of that closeout funding. This particular project has been discussed in great detail regarding the downtown. There were open meetings, there were concepts, there were meetings at the community center with TAMA, the Chamber, and open houses that discussed possibilities for the Avenue of the Fountains, Verdi River, Park View. In this particular instance for this grant, as that process was underway, we had applied for this two years before that process started. Through discussions and direction, the council gave direction for staff to move forward with the concepts for Verdi River and Park View. That's what this grant is. This is a 15% design concept grant. It's a lot of money for what sounds like 15% for MAG to be paying nearly $100,000. A moment to explain that. An incredible amount of legwork is necessary that includes a lot of survey and a lot of utility locating and identifying information. And we are thankful that the majority of that is going to be addressed through this grant. It's important to note, if this grant is approved, and as we move forward as part of next year's budget and budget items in there, we will roll right into the 60 and 90% design utilizing another firm through our selection process. And again, the key legwork and a lot of the data and technical challenges will be accomplished with this. The next portion will get us that much further. Lots of talking. Any questions that I might be able to answer? I'll do the best I can.
Councilwoman Earl?
I have a few questions. This is the right one. You're not, you're just not showing the pictures, right? Do I have the right one for you? I believe I do. We're working on the, when I see here, a lot of residents are saying they don't want to get rid of the palm trees. Is this just pictures we have here, or we?
This is not, this is a park view.
Okay, it is Park View. It does say Park View.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So, it does say Park View. Are we still deciding to do that, or is this just preliminary, just a, an idea? These are ideas. Because I see the palm trees are removed, and there's no bike lanes anymore. The pictures show the bikes riding where the cars would go. Are we sticking with all of that, or is that, is this still just open to, not, not permanent?
Mayor and councilmember Earl, so I, I'm not sure what concept you are looking at there. In regards to Park View and Verdi River, there are a very, very limited number of palm trees. But as part of the conceptual design, nothing will be slated for removal. And, and, and again, I'm, I'm not sure what concept or what version of the concept that is.
It's in our packet.
But there's very little information, or very few palm trees along Park View, and even less on Verdi River. So, the initial plan is, is no, is not to destroy anything right now. This is a planning process that will once again, later on in the design, come back for final approval.
Okay. Because I was, just, I like all the extra parking, but was concerned that there's no bike lanes anymore where the, we all, I think we have a lot of bikers, bicycle riders. So, okay.
Vice Mayor?
Just piggybacking off of Councilwoman Earl, because I realize the same. The, the design in our packet is not a design we're about to pay for the design, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, that is correct. So, those are the concepts. The design process is going to move forward from here to the 15% mark.
So, just to make sure everyone's mind is at ease, no plans to get rid of the bike lanes?
And, so we currently do not have any bike lanes on Park View or Verdi River? Those are bike routes.
Ah, okay. So, there's, that's correct. You know what? I'm thinking of the wrong. Okay. So, there's not currently a bike lane on those roads. Would, are we adding a bike lane?
So, the design, and whether or not you make it a route or, or a lane, is really critical. So, adding bike lanes where there is a considerable amount of cars parked, let's pick the Avenue of the Fountains, historically is not a good idea.
Okay.
Because the bike lane would be directly behind the vehicles. There has been discussion in the past about moving it to the left side of the road. That causes confusion because cyclists entering and exiting that area will have to diagonally cross. So, for the downtown area as a whole, where there's a lot of angled parking or parking in forward, there are no bike lanes for safety reasons. If it's parallel parking or curbside parking, and there is an opportunity for a bike lane and lower speeds, we'll take advantage of that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Justin. I appreciate it. And I realize that when, when we're building a packet in general to illustrate projects we're going to do, it's kind of hard when we don't have a design. And so, I, I know that I did it on Avenue of the Fountains. It's easy to do it on the Park View. So, for anyone who sees our packet, don't panic. Okay.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, just so we can focus on what we're discussing here tonight, this was all covered by the strategic plan. We've been, for years, we've been talking about gap elimination. We've gotten a lot of grant money. We've spent a lot of money. This is simply for connectivity, I believe, in, in our town to, to a better design, which has been, and part of the general plan, part of the strategic plan, connectivity, safety, and improved walkability. So, we, we do have letters in our packet from, of support from Track 208. It's letters of support from the Chamber of Commerce, letters of support from TAMA, who are the business owners that live, that work and have businesses in that community. So, it seems like this is pretty much widely approved by the community. So, based on that, I would just like to move to approve Resolution 2025-07.
I will second that.
So, we have a motion and a second. But before we get to that, do we have any comment cards from the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skellicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Calavianakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you.
Justin, you're up for the next one too, which is approving additional funding for capital improvement project, D 6057 for Golden Eagle Impoundment Project. Rachel?
Director, take it away.
Thank you for the opportunity again, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank whoever decided to place each one of these agenda items the way they are. A gift of money, and then here I come. Historically, at this point, I would hold out my hand with a proverbial hat. Tonight, the proverbial hat is simply not big enough. This is a truckload of money, and we take that seriously. I, along with all of the staff behind me, the staff still working upstairs, the town manager and all this council are stewards of the people's money, and we don't spend it frivolously. In this particular case, the design alone took multiple years and had several different changes throughout that timeframe. As a reminder, the Golden Eagle Impoundment is an area behind Golden Eagle Dam designed to prevent downstream flooding that could result in the loss of life or homes. There was a decision early on, when the town was a much younger town, to build a park in there with the understanding that at times that park would be flooded with backwater. A little bit of clarification on backwatering. Backwatering is when the water flows up to the dam, and as it checks up to the dam, it begins to gently just fill the area. That is what it's intended for. Unfortunately, because of the original design, we had outbreak. I send videos to Kevin on a regular basis of that water breaking out of those washes and across those ballfields. That's what happens when you have a design that's not quite or nowhere near what is necessary for the capacity for unusual weather patterns. As of recent, Kevin and I, including several in-depth and heated discussions with the town manager and the chief financial officer about the cost of this project, I was asked several times over the last several weeks, "Are you comfortable with this? Are you comfortable with this?" I repeatedly said, "No, no, 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 no." And the reason for that is we were at about 90% on this project. And just week before last, Kevin and I discovered some other things that are going to cost a little bit of money, but within this budget, but needs to be addressed. As we have been moving forward through this design and eventual construction project, I think it's important to note, this started as a flood control project to protect the property and the investment that is, we know as Golden Eagle Park. We quickly discovered that the design of the park in this impoundment area early on didn't take into account any expansion for flood control, and it became not only a flood control project, but a necessary, not park improvement project, but improvements to the amenities that support the park. Keep in mind, the project is not planting any grass or putting up any fences or scoreboards or anything like that, nothing new. We are simply protecting the infrastructure that services electrical and irrigation. It's a complicated process, lots of days, weeks, hours, months, and now years. As I come to you tonight, I feel comfortable that we are getting close to the finish line, and I'll state this publicly. I am not comfortable that this ask is for enough money, but I believe based on all of the math that has been done by several people, that we have adequate funding. In the event that that is inaccurate, I will be right back here again. I'm hoping that will not happen because we are down to the last probably five weeks of this project until we reach substantial completion. Big ask, we are aware of it, and we understand it as stewards. So, we ask for your consideration to approve it so we can keep moving forward and finish this project. With that, I'll do my best to answer any questions I can.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I've been out to this project with you several times. I've seen the scope of this project, the size of the, and the amount of work that has to be done out there. So, I'm in favor of getting this project finished and, and finish the right way. So, with that, I'll, I'll ask Councilwoman Earl, do you have something you need to ask?
Yes, I see you, we're going to get $100,000 from the Panorama Park project. Is that an excess that we had left over from that project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Earl, in fact, that park has been completed, and that's unspent funding from that.
Okay. And then the other 200,000, is that something we have in the capital project fund that was not, I mean, that we have excess in there that wasn't set aside for something else, or are we going to take it away from something else that was planned for?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, that is funding that is already set aside in the capital that is unspent from other projects. So, it's already budgeted in capital.
And then also, did you get, see Paul, up and down, up and down. I'm, I'm just wondering about like bids on this? Was this, or did you just, for the, making sure about the other extra 300,000? So, go ahead, Paul, sorry.
I've been promising Justin and Kevin I wouldn't just jump up here like this. So, I tried not to. But just to clarify that last comment, the $200,000 is coming from our leftover contingency in the capital projects fund. It's the last of it. So, that's why we need $100,000 from the Panorama Park project, which has been completed.
Okay.
To answer your question, Council- To answer your question, Councilmember, when a project is underway and you have a general contractor already there, you do not solicit additional bids for the work that they've encountered as part of that. However, there are unit prices associated with the lion's share of the work and for each individual component, including but not limited to concrete, PVC valves and sprinklers, they are required to provide pack-up documents and then the Maricopa Association of Government prints specifications that include language about how much above overhead they can charge, which is 10%, and for parts and labor, 15%. So we keep that in the checks and balances. There are a few circumstances in which we are paying just slightly more than that, but we're trying to stay with the MAG policy as much as possible and the unit pricing as much as possible.
I just want to make sure they're not charging more because we're a municipality.
So the process doesn't work like that.
Okay.
Councilman Watts?
Justin, I think you really answered the questions, but I'm going to paraphrase again. Due to the expansion of the scope of the original project, you encountered some of these change orders that normally would have been, I would have anticipated to be included in the, in the original estimates, but they aren't because the scope somewhat creeped. And I'm glad to hear that similar to like an AIA contract, you've got a markup on parts, labor, et cetera, that's already defined, so then you get backup documentation. Is that a fair statement, both sides of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Watts, that is correct. Not only we have unit pricing, but we have MAG to back us up because they signed an agreement that states we are going to be using MAG. Also, we have data from earlier on that we believe to be accurate. I'm just going to give you a couple of quick examples. We paid during the design to have the water mains for the reclaimed water that waters the park potholed. We potholed it at location A, we potholed it at location B. Unbeknownst to Kevin and I, in between A and B, they must have found a rock, a tree, or somebody fell asleep and it went from 17 feet deep to two feet deep. So just little stuff like that now requires that to be realigned. And in today's standards, we can't just simply throw some PVC pipe in there. I'm going to get a little bit technical here, but it requires mechanical string, mechanical fasteners and devices to keep it from blowing apart because we're putting in a dip section is what the technical term is, so yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, Justin, I just want to thank you for your diligence and your transparency on this project. It can't be easy coming back and asking for more with, I'm sure this has been a very frustrating project for you and your staff. However, I recognize the importance of it even from a safety perspective, not just our, protecting our amenities. And with that, I'd like to motion to approve the extension, or not extension, but what's the proper term for this? The additional funding for the Capital Improvement Project, D 6057. And I think I speak for all of us that it feels good to be toward the home stretch of this. That was a motion.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll, I'll second it if you want.
I'm, I'm going to be voting yes on this too. I certainly appreciate your reticence to come before this body and ask for this kind of money, given the scope of that project and what has cost this town before. So I can appreciate your coming here. Unanticipated construction costs is always the last thing people want to hear. If you take a bid on getting your roof repaired in your home and they bid it for 15,000, then they start doing the work and they said, oh, there's structural damage, we need another seven. That's when people go crazy and they don't appreciate the extra cost, but that's just part of doing business and especially for remediation of this, this kind of drainage that, you know, it's been going on for a long time. And after the 100-year flood, you know, this has just been a constant ask. So, you know, I, I share the vice mayor's, I, I hope this is the last ask for this project. I, I know it could be a cautionary tale for future projects like the Shea widening, Palomino. I know the community centers had a lot of overruns and even the downtown plan that is anticipated to be $10,000 and that's another one, we could see more overruns just based on what's on the ground. But in, in this case, you know, that's a cautionary tale for future spending, but on this one, normally it's like we make, have to make difficult decisions here. This is actually a pretty easy decision. We have to finish the project and the funding's got to come from someplace. So, thank you.
Justin, we appreciate your transparency with this too and bringing it back to us.
Town clerk, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any comment cards from the public?
No, Mayor.
No, okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larrabee?
Aye.
And Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you. And we'll move on to item D, which is discussion and possible direction, review of existing town travel procedures. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, this was an item requested by Councilmember Skilicorn, reviewing the travel procedures. Granted, we did not discuss whether, you know, what the context of the question was. What has been included here is the procedure and the policy as it relates to staff. We have a pretty rigorous policy with several layers of approval and review through our managers, our directors, as well as up to myself. The question may have been more specific to our council members. If it was, there is no specific policy that the council members currently follow. It is usually left to each member individually to participate in travel and training when it comes to these things. With that, Paul's here to present and share any details about the policy. Otherwise, I will turn it over for the, to the council for discussion.
So Mayor and council, I do have the documents uploaded in the agenda packet available if you'd like me to open and review them, but in general, Rachel pretty much stated a summary of, of the materials. So we have a, a travel procedure for staff that was approved by the former town manager in 2016 that we follow. We update the forms on annual basis. Just some key points, we do require pre-authorization for travel outside of Maricopa County as well as out of state and that's on a form. It's, it's required to be approved by the department director or the town manager for out-of-state travel. For example, if I travel as a department director, Rachel, the town manager, would approve, pre-approve my travel and that would include an estimate of travel expenditures on that form. We also have form for, a form for mileage reimbursements that uses the federal, the annual federal guidelines for mileage reimbursement rates. And the other form is a reimbursement form in case there's reimbursements. Typically, that's for per diem for meals and/or the mileage associated with it. So that's what we do have currently and I have the documents available and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, staff. That was great reading the details. It's a very thorough policy. I think everything has really covered it and really my intent was to talk about the, you know, for elected officials. You know, it looks like everything's handled for staff and it looks like there's really no loopholes or avenues for abuse there, so that's a good thing. But really, I mean, we do get a, a generous stipend, so I'm concerned about this travel staff. So we can have access to town vehicles. We shouldn't be, need to be, you know, using our own vehicles for miles. If we basically follow that procedure the staff already has, you know, we're already one step ahead of the curve. And then, you know, the other thing I can think of is like overnight stays in hotels if we're like within 50 miles or something, you know, that's just wholly inappropriate. So I would actually like to add an addendum to this that the elected officials don't get travel reimbursement under 50 miles and elected officials don't get to, to actually submit receipts for housing, like hotels and things within 50 miles. So that would be my motion on this particular item.
I'd like to second that motion.
Just to be clear for, this item isn't for agendized forward motions tonight, it's for discussion and direction, so we can certainly bring that back as an agendized item for that.
Just, I agree. I'd like to have it come back.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring that back.
I guess, Mayor and council, just real quick, one question, would that come back as an official, like resolution and policy or would it be just amending this administrative document all based on the, the future direction? Like what, what would you envision?
Do we need a separate document for council?
I think it would probably be helpful so that you guys can make sure to discuss it and approve it. So we'll, we'll create a secondary document that's specific to electeds for the travel and training purposes.
Agreed.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor, so I am reading the agenda. It does say for D, discussion and possible direction.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I believe that we can make a motion to provide direction for the intent of this. That's, I believe we could do that.
Sure, I would, where I'm going is we can't approve or anything. We would still need to be bringing the item back in its form to be formally adopted. So, and I'm, I'm going to defer to the town clerk and our town attorney to make sure my procedure here is correct, but generally it's agendized as considered impossible action.
Yeah, Mayor and council, I believe there's a distinction between... Mayor and council, I believe there is a distinction between possible direction and when we notice action. There, there's been some recent case law on that. Don't have it in front of me right now, but I would hate for there to be an inadvertent open meeting law violation because we did not specifically identify this as an action item tonight. Councils often give direction to, to staff without a formal motion and that's absolutely fine, it's been noticed, but if you're going to actually take a, a motion action, I would suggest that not happen tonight.
Vice Mayor.
I just had a quick question for when that does come back regarding the policy of no less than 50-mile refunds or reimbursements. I, I want to clarify that that would be a, a policy we're enacting, not like a resolution or...
Sure, yes. I, I would say that all of this is, is a policy level, right? This is about how we conduct business. So we'll bring that back, articulate that based on the feedback that we just heard and the directive we just received. That way you guys can vote on a, a clear, clearly worded policy in that regard.
Perfect, thank you.
Great.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to admit, when I saw this come up on our agenda, I found it confusing. And so I would like to ask you, Mr. Mayor, I would like, like to ask you, Rachel, our town manager, has council members requesting lodging reimbursements been a problem for this town?
So during my tenure here, the council members, have we set aside budgetary, you know, we've set aside the budget to accommodate that. Generally, it's once a year for the league conference and that can vary on location. Sometimes it's in Tucson, sometimes it's here in the valley, depends on where it is. And not everybody chooses to exercise it. Some folks don't attend, some folks don't choose not to stay overnight, whether that's for personal reasons or professional reasons or whatnot. So we've handled that individually per council member.
Because it seems like if we're going to go to this extraordinary measure to agendize it, discuss it, talk about it tonight and bring it back, that there must have been some abuse or some reason why we're having this conversation other than we're just looking for a, a problem in search of a solution. Mr. Mayor, are you familiar with any abuse of this?
I don't, I don't know of any abuses.
So I guess why are we talking about this tonight?
The reason it's on the agenda tonight is it was requested by a council member and seconded and thirded per our policy. That's how things are added to the agenda.
Well, Mr. Mayor, could you ask the council member Skilicorn if he can identify any reasons or any abuse that he would like to point out that would make him raise this and have us spend valuable time tonight talking about this?
Councilmember, do you have any input?
None at this time.
All I can say is you can see my frustration, Mr. Mayor, that he, he won't explain while we're doing this. It's not a problem, but now we're going to waste all the staff time, we're going to waste council time, we're going to waste the public's time, and we're going to waste our time talking about a problem that doesn't exist. I just want to point that out. Maybe I should have voted for that race.
Go to...
Because this is, this is crazy.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yes, I'd like to say we don't always have to make a policy, you have to have the abuse first. I think it's good to make a policy before there's abuse. I will mention that I did send an email because I was surprised that our town was going to pay, asking us if we wanted to get a hotel room for the League of Cities and Towns meeting we're having in August at a price of, if you had tax on all, about $200 a night for three nights at $600 a person. That's more than our monthly stipend. Maybe we should balance out the stipend and then, and not be paying these, these fees here. And I would say the Arizona Leagues and Towns is only, I mapped it out, 25-minute drive from my house. So I don't see why we would be spending $600 for a 25-minute ride one way, just if we're trying to save the town money in that way. Thank you.
Before I call on Rick, I'll just weigh in and I'll just say, I don't, I think it's, it should be left up to the discretion of the council members. I don't think there's been any abuse for that. Some people don't like night driving and they're, some of those meetings, they start at 7:00 AM, so you have to be there really early. So again, I don't see it as an abuse, but I think it should be left up to the individual council members. And you, and you choose and you live with your decision. That's just my two cents. Councilman Watts?
I think you just took the words out of my mouth. Unless we can identify an abuse, I don't see any reason changing what we're doing today because most of it is done in good conscience. I know that when I drive down to GPEC, it's 32 miles, 64 miles total. So I, there are certain things in town I don't do, there are certain things out of town I will do, and I think it is to the discretion of each council, council person which they, what they feel is appropriate.
Vice Mayor?
I look forward to discussing this again, but I did want to bring up that I find it concerning that there appears to be an attitude that we need to have fraud committed or someone taking advantage of our town in order to make a policy. This is something that other municipalities have policies on that we don't have anything in the books yet. I mean, we just talked about how our travel procedures are only for staff at the moment. So while I, I welcome the discussion of my fellow council members and I look forward to us finding an amicable solution to not having any policy. You know, you don't have to agree with my motion, but maybe we can find a middle ground, but I, I just find it, I find it frustrating that we're putting up a false dichotomy here of either you don't pass any policy or you think that someone committed a crime. That seems a little silly to me.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I just want to applaud you for making your, your comments that I think maybe some of the junior members here don't, maybe they haven't been to one of these conferences, but, you know, as a member of the Public Safety Military and Courts and also the Budgetary Commission for MAG and Cities and Towns, you know, those meetings, they start before the regular conferences, you, Jerry, as you know. And then we have the very early mornings, the dinners usually from six to nine, and then generally after that, a lot of times we're speaking with other mayors, council people. I mean, last year, I hung around with Rachel. And, you know, and so you're, you're talking to your colleagues, you're talking to people about what they're doing for their town. How's Phoenix handling this? How's Sapphire handling that? How's Tucson doing this? It gives you such a beautiful opportunity to talk to other public officials and to see how they're doing things, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. This is one time a year that for a couple of days, you get to be with your colleagues, your, your fellow mayors, your council members, your managers, the town staff, and have an abundant exchange of ideas. This has been, I, I still contact people I've met at these conferences and court side, I've been giving them directions on how they can monetize all the RVs going in there. I'm like, Brendan, you have some good ideas, so... So I'm just saying that, you know, for us to say that the town of Fountain Hills can't afford lodging for a once-a-year event, it just seems beyond the pale of reason to me.
Okay, so we have, we have our direction. I think we can just move this along. I'll let Rick finish it up here.
Junior member or not, I think I've got enough experience with managing budgets, managing expense reports. So it has nothing to do with the demeaning statement of junior member. And I look forward to, as our vice mayor said, a good interaction, conversation where we can either put this to bed, where we can put some bumpers around it. But I think most people on this council are honest. And I would agree with what you have to say, I have to agree with what others on the council have said, so I don't disagree. And the only other caveat I would say is it may be a great time to bring back the stipend and talk about rolling it into, similar to expenses, because a stipend is not a salary. It is just that, a stipend, which would fall into the category of expenses. So maybe we can kill two birds with one stone and don't have to have hard bumpers around it, but let's put some guidelines so we all agree on it.
I would agree with that, and maybe the other thing we can do is revisit the, bringing back the ethics codes. So if one of these council members goes in and double dips on these hotel stays, that we can file an ethics charge against him.
Thank you. Okay, so you have direction on that one? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to E. Any, I don't think there's much going on with the league right now.
Other than emails.
Other than emails, okay. Yeah, yeah. All right, do we have any council discussion or direction to the town manager, other than what we just gave your direction?
I just wanted to address the email that we all got today from Mike and Sherry Hicks, and wondering if we are going to, you know, regarding the Palomino Boulevard reconstruction or reconfiguration. I know we had a discussion with that. I just wanted to, if anybody else read that was concerned if there are a lot of homeowners that weren't aware of what's going to be happening. So I don't know what direction we would do with that, but...
The honest answer is the staff and I have not had a chance to review that together. I know Dustin was out in the field for a good portion of the day, and most of us were getting prepped for tonight. So if you can allow me a chance to talk with the staff, I'll get a follow-up email out to all of you guys about next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and then any future agenda items? Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.